Yeah.
So I think he probably, I'm not sure, we can't tell which. Uh, sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's interesting.
Yeah.
One way. It's terrible.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty Chicago style thing. It's just a great, you know, it's up one over one, you know, because everything is perfect, great, you know, right? Um, there was. You know, if you miss your road, you just go. Um. There's a cross there or the. I mean, Chicago is my true home is like an hour and a half south of Chicago. I lived in Chicago for six years, but I go back and visit.
Yeah.
Something with the control. But right now. That was probably on.
Yeah.
But I like your stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, what did she get married?
Yeah.
I don't know which it is. Never went to a. This kid's kid.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, like a. Yeah. Right. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Did you know the, uh, well, so there's like the, that would be the building needs to be where something go, I could. But do my work, I free passes all those every once in a while, like Saturday. Yeah, pretty. Yeah.
What's the routine that Joseph like how?
You know, we're getting a little more. Hopefully it's a century four. Well, the better. If you get a good red, then it should make. Yeah. Oh, this is.
Mrs. Pleek, Peake, could you please call us out of closed session?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed pending litigation or potential litigation, excuse me, under government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, sub D, sub four. Uh, the council discussed the matter with the city attorney, city manager, and the housing and neighborhood services director, uh, and provided direction. No reportable action was taken, and that concludes closed session report.
Then that would, um, I'd like to adjourn the special meeting. Sorry we were back a little bit late. I now would like to call the meeting to order, the regular city council meeting for May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Uh, could you please, do we have some scouts leading us in the pledge of allegiance this evening? Yes, so excited. This is Boy Scout Troop six fifty one and Girl Scout Troop thirteen seventy seven. That would be fabulous. All right, should we stand? Are you ready for us?
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance, discussing. Pledge allegiance to the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, I have an invocation. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we're not only leaders, but also foremost servants, and that it is our responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know what to do as good, right, and true. May we always speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Okay. Moving on to our roll call. Mr. Skolik.
Councilmember LeBlanc.
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Here.
Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sannella.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Okay, we have, uh, three presentations this evening. If the council could please, uh, join us in down at the podium, that would be great. Well, this doesn't happen very often. We have a seventy-fifth anniversary this evening, and we've only been a city for sixty, uh, two years, so it's a little bit longer than we've been around. Anyway, we have the seventy-fifth anniversary of Halandia Dairy, and that's going to be presented to Patrick Schalberger, the CEO, and Rick Struble, general sales manager, as well as Lucas DeBoer, uh, the chief business analyst. Are they here this evening? Yes, please come on up. Seventy-five years, and none of you gentlemen are seventy-five either. Thank goodness. Neither am I, thank goodness. Uh, anyway, um, I'm gonna read this real quick, but this is a really exciting thing. I remember, and I'm, I'm sure that each one of the council members could share an amazing story about, uh, Halandia, but when I first moved back to San Marcos after being gone for a couple of years in two thousand, my son was four, and grandpa, uh, he lived over, um, he's passed away now, but he used to take my son over to see the cows, as he would call it, and then they would go to the, um, the, the little stand there and buy a popsicle afterward. And it was such a wonderful, and by the way, my son is now twenty-nine, but it was such a wonderful thing for him to do with his grandfather, and I know, and they used to go and pet the cows and everything, so it was really very cool. And I know there are just generations of families that did that, and so, you know, now Halandia Park is, uh, there on part of the land, but we just really appreciate you, uh, being part of the, um, of the city, so I'm gonna read this little proclamation. Um, it's not that little, but I'll be as quick as possible. Anyway, uh, the Halandia Dairy was founded in nineteen fifty by the DeYoung family, who immigrated from the Netherlands with the dream of becoming dairy farmers in the United States, starting with humble means and escondido, and establishing a legacy based on quality, hard work, and family values. Over the past seventy-five years, the DeYoung family has grown Halandia Dairy into one of California's oldest and most respected independent dairy producers and distributors, known for providing farm-fresh, high-quality milk and dairy products to Southern California. Halandia Dairy has remained a family-owned business guided by a commitment to sustainable farming, humane treatment of animals, and delivering fresh, nutritious dairy products to homes, schools, restaurants, and businesses across the region. Which, on a side note, real quick, um, also many of the schools do still carry, uh, the Halandia, um, juice and milk, uh, in their schools, because you also have milk, uh, juice as well. Um, anyway, uh, through dedication, perseverance, and innovation, the DeYoung family has explained their, has expanded their operations, contributed to local communities, and built strong relationships with customers while upholding their core values of integrity, excellence, and service to the community. As Halandia Dairy celebrates its seventy-fifth anniversary in two thousand twenty-five, we honor the enduring legacy of the DeYoung family and the remarkable impact on the dairy industry in Southern California, and the generations of employees and customers, and visitors, of course, that have supported their mission. We, the city council of the city of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim Halandia Dairy's seventy-fifth anniversary recognizing their legacy of quality, family unity, and unwavering dedication to serving the people of San Marcos and all of Southern California. Let's give them a hand. Now who's going to speak on your behalf? Is it going to be you today? Okay.
Um, first off, it's an honor to be up here today on behalf of Halandia Dairy to accept this proclamation. Um, the family is very appreciative that we're acknowledged. Um, this community is where they all grew up, and, um, they're just happy to be part of San Marcos. It's, it's a great community, and to be able to serve it and grow alongside of the community, um, is something that Halandia Dairy, the DeYoung family is very proud of, and, uh, it's dear to their heart. This is where they all got their start at, here in, uh, at Halandia Dairy, so we're really thankful for you guys acknowledging us, and we're really proud to be part of the San Marcos community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then this is for you.
Thank you very much.
And then you get to take a picture with us.
All right. Perfect.
I did, I did also want to mention that, um, Ari DeYoung just passed away a couple of years ago, and so, um, it's, it's really great to see that they're still part of the community and, uh, really, uh, still engaged, and I didn't mention it in my comments, but they do so much for the community. They really are engaged. They support the Boys and Girls Clubs and the schools. I mean, it's really a remarkable, uh, legacy that, uh, they have really forged here in San Marcos. Seventy-five years. You're not planning on leaving soon, are you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It's a lot to carry here, so I didn't want to get them all messed up. Okay, so this is a really big one. Um, it's the, uh, mental health awareness, uh, proclamations. So Cheryl Baker, uh, the counselor from Mission Hills High School, Charlie Greiner, uh, counselor, Michelle Santiago, uh, a social worker, uh, also from Mission Hills High School, and then Alejandro Perez, True Care Community Programs Manager, and Stephanie Sanchez, True Care Community Program Coordinator. Come on up. I think there's someone missing then. Oh, okay, Michelle. Oh, no, that's okay. That's okay. I'm just need to make sure I give you all the right ones. Uh, I, I think I'm just gonna read one, if you don't mind. Anyway, um, you know, I think we really realized during the pandemic that we had a lot of mental health issues that were maybe bubbling under the surface, and so what you ladies all do every day is, uh, loving our community members, but, and our kids too, I mean, especially our kids. Uh, they have really suffered, I think, during the pandemic, which is one of the reasons that the city, um, uh, worked with the school district to use some of our ARPA funds to help with the, the kids and their mental health. Um, we just, I, I mean, a lot of people say, I could never do your job. I honestly could never do your job. Uh, but you all do something very special for our community every day, and so we really want to commend you on that. So I'm gonna just read this real quick. Um, Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health is essential to the overall well-being of individuals, families, and communities, and raising awareness about mental health is crucial for fostering understanding, reducing stigma, and encouraging those in need to seek help. The Let's Face It Together program, I didn't even know what my comments were, um, uh, is supported by the San Marcos Unified School District and the City of San Marcos. It's dedicated to providing vital mental health support for our youth and teens, connecting them to appropriate services to improve their mental health and quality of life. Today's digital and social challenges, exasperated by the global pandemic, have intensified the mental and emotional toll on students, making the transition from childhood to adolescence particularly difficult and highlighting the increased need for support. The Let's Face It Together program works to dismantle the stigma surrounding mental health, encouraging open conversations, and ensuring that those suffering in silence feel empowered to reach out for help, addressing common struggles such as academic and social pressure, anxiety, depression, and family instability. Therefore, we, the city council of the city of San Marcos, do hereby express our full support to Let's Faces Together program and to commit to fostering a healthy, stigma-free environment to all residents, ensuring that when, mental health remains a priority in our community. Today, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Okay, so Cheryl, are you going to have a few words for us? Okay, and then I'm gonna, I'm going to, I give this to you, and then I'm gonna pass these out as you are, as I please, addressing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Thank you, esteemed council members, for inviting us here tonight. Mental health awareness is at the heart of everything that we do every day. Um, we love this community. We love our kids. The kids grow up to be our neighbors and our colleagues, and I've been living and working in San Marcos for over twenty-five years, and I love this place with all my heart. Um, and so, you know, everybody has a story. We each have a story, and so to reduce the stigma, um, around mental health and to, it's okay to be not okay, and to know that there's always help and hope is at the heart of what we do. So this proclamation and your leadership sends a clear message that it takes all of us to support mental health awareness in our community, and from the bottom of our hearts, thank you so very much.
All right, now we'll take a quick picture, if you don't mind. All right, thank you so much. All right, our next, uh, proclamation goes to Shane Harris. I don't think I see him here this evening, but it's Go Blue for Foster Youth, so I was wearing the right color. Um, across the country, are, there are among three hundred and ninety thousand children and youth in foster care on any given day, sixty thousand across California, with approximately two thousand in San Diego County. Whereas nationally noted foster care reform advocates, San Diego foster youth advocates, and San Diego county supervisors, partnered on May twentieth to kick off National Foster Care Month, to raise awareness, explore innovative policy changes that address the needs of children in foster care, and to recognize the contributions of foster children, foster parents, social workers, and advocates who work to improve the lives of children in foster care. And San Diego Wear Blue Week was launched this month, seeking to solidify stronger efforts through meant, uh, mutual partnerships combating the overwhelming statistics that show the great disparities that foster youth have to overcome. Twenty percent of foster youth go homeless upon exiting care. Ten percent of foster youth go to college, while only three percent graduate nationally. The City of San Marcos is committed to recognizing and honoring all foster care organizations who are dedicated to our children and youth in San Diego, as well as doing everything it can to support this population. Therefore, we, the city council of the city of San Marcos, commend the invaluable contribution of foster parents, social workers, and former foster youths who are leading the policy changes that seek to improve the lives of foster families and children throughout the city of San Marcos, and do hereby proclaim the month of May to be National Foster Care Month in the city of San Marcos on this day, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. So we don't have anyone here this evening to accept this. They probably got stuck in the freeway, uh, driving up. Uh, but I am going to, um, can we take just a quick picture? And, and truly, um, all of the things that are happening with our foster youth are very sad. Um, a lot of times, they don't have the support system, and so therefore, there's, there's like that, um, in-between, um, where they don't have that net, uh, to help them, so we appreciate all of the foster parents, all of the organizations that are helping them, and, uh, really, uh, caring for them in our communities. So anyway, thank you very much. Oh, no one wants to stay for our meeting. I'm just kidding. Okay. All right, next up is our consent agenda. Uh, we do have one item that I would like to pull, just trying to find that real quick.
Item number thirteen, Madam Mayor.
Thirteen, yes.
Uh, it doesn't need to be pulled. I do need to just simply note for the record that that relates to a proposed three point eight percent increase in the council salary, uh, which leads up to a whopping thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents a month. Um, and, uh, I think the, uh, ultimate monthly salary would then be one thousand fourteen, um, and seventy-nine cents. And the city attorney and the city manager will work together with respect to future increases, as noted in the resolution and ordinance number two thousand and nine thirteen fifteen, to ensure that it is done in accordance with all then-current reporting requirements, of which this is one, so.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion by any council members? If not, I move to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we do have one person to speak on.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, I didn't, oh, it is right here. Sorry, I put my papers on top of it. We do have, uh, one, uh, speaker, uh, Grace Spivak, uh, from Universidad Popular. My apologies.
I have a comment in support, so you're good. Um, I just did want to read on the record, um, our director, Asela Nunez, shared a public comment, um, from our last meeting, but I just wanted to say it to make sure it got on the record, um, and for all the council members to hear as well, so I'm just gonna read her, her comment. Um, thank you for making public the local Responsibility Area Fire Hazard Severity Zone map as presented in the ordinance number two thousand twenty-five fifteen fifty-nine. Our team at Universidad Popular is part of the statewide Listos California campaign, helping to increase community emergency preparedness, particularly among elders and non-English-speaking communities. It's extremely important, as you all know, that everyone in our city learn about the updated maps, designating lands as moderate, high, or very high fire hazard severity zones, incorporating the latest fire science, localized climate data, and improved fire modeling techniques. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city to share this information with the public. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Grace. Okay, we had a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any knows, hearing none? Uh, do we have any further? Oh, we've got some public speakers. All right. Uh, okay, um, public speakers, we have Grace Spivak, followed by John Mosher, and then Jennifer Gift. Your backup, Grace. Sorry, if I would have seen it, I would have just said, just hold on one moment.
Okay, so again, my name's Grace Spivak. Um, I'm here on behalf of Universidad Popular to provide our on-the-record updates. Um, as you already know, because we just discussed it, um, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, so we have been thrilled to join the charge in bringing awareness to this issue. We participated in Youth Mental Health, Mental Wellness Week of Action, um, which was May sixteenth through the twenty-third. Um, it was a seven-day call to action to promote understanding, reduce stigma, encourage conversations around mental health, and to share the free resources that are available to California's youth, um, ages zero to twenty-five. So Bright Life Kids is for all California families, parents, and caretakers with children ages zero to twelve, and then the Saluna application is for youth and young adults ages thirteen to twenty-five. Both of these applications offer resources like one-on-one coaching, stress management tools, and video resources to create positive mental health habits from a young age, helping children to develop into happier and healthier adults. And, um, because we are partners of the State's Office of Community Partnerships and Strategic Communications, Universidad Popular has been doing really intensive and focused outreach at different elementary schools to try and reach the children and families who might benefit most from these programs. Secondly, I had the opportunity to attend the California Stop the Hate convening as a representative of Universidad Popular in Sacramento on May twelfth, and then participate in a day of advocacy on May thirteenth. The first day of the conference was a gathering of community organizations statewide who work diligently to prevent hate and provide resources to victims of hate crimes. The purpose was to strengthen the Stop the Hate network, to build and deepen relationships among all Stop the Hate grantees, and to develop sustainable strategies to advance community healing and safety. I just wanted to share with you all, because I learned a great deal from all the other community organizers about their experiences with hate against the different populations that they work with, and what's been successful for them in empowering their communities. And the second day of the convening was a day of action. Our purpose was to make legislators aware of the necessity of this program and to advocate for funding in next year's budget when it comes around. So I wanted to share, it was a great learning experience for me. It's a really great program, um, and it helped me to gain a better understanding of our state legislator as well. Thirdly, we're, um, really looking forward to participating in the Mayor's State of Your Community event, and we wanted to thank you for extending this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grace. Uh, next up is John Mosher, followed by Jennifer Gift.
Evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff. Um, I'm here speaking, uh, with Semra, San Marcos Mobile Home Resident Association. Uh, this year, Tim Shehan and I, uh, had the opportunity to work with Lakeview and Rancho San Marcos. They've had a situation where they were on long-term leases, but a state law, uh, became active first of January, put them under, uh, the city ordinance, and, um, we worked from, to understand it. Um, recently Sylvia, Evette, and Phil came out to Rancho San Marcos, had a meeting with the residents, and explained to them the difference, um, what happens with the ordinance, um, the fact that we can, when you get a rent increase notice, you can petition within thirty days to have a chance to negotiate with, with your owners. Unfortunately, at this meeting, um, members of management showed up, and, um, they basically inserted themselves in the process of, uh, the residents being able to fill out the petition and, and file it like we normally would. And, um, they were asked to send them a letter last Friday with what they said would be included. Um, when it came, they actually had a ballot attached to it instead of something that the residents could send out and send their own ballot. This is all happening before the petition is even submitted. And what's sad about it is, your petition process on the ordinance sets it up so that we negotiate in good faith, and, uh, this does not qualify for that. So it's left, uh, residents in a quandary. Um, the amount requested was more than what, um, our CPI increase year over year would be per the ordinance. So the concern is, uh, are the residents getting a, a fair shake? Um, and honestly, the next few days is gonna tell us something, but it, uh, the way the situation has unfolded isn't good. Um, one thing I did learn in going to these parks, uh, a number of times, is that, um, some of them, when they moved in, had their base rent increased, when per our ordinance, they're not supposed to do that, especially the seller to seller, um, and, and the owner's not selling, uh, um, one of the units. And, um, I know, um, this had occurred at Rancho San Marcos, and, and, um, believe Ms. Peak sent them out a letter back in two thousand twenty-three to try and get a listing from them of what was going on. Um, and I was hearing the same thing at a couple meetings, some of the younger ones that just moved in, it had happened to. So I know they're gonna be reaching out to the city on that, and I know Sylvia and Evette are open ears on that to see what's going on. And I know Sylvia and Evette are open ears on that to see what's going on. But we appreciate you keeping your ears open or help see what happens with the situation and try and be fair to Rancho San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Up next is Jennifer Gift.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council Members. My name is Jennifer Gift and I'm a program supervisor with Vista Community Clinic's Tobacco Control Program. First, I want to personally thank Mayor Jones and Deputy Mayor Sonella for attending our community forum last month called A Piece of the Action, where we discussed youth vaping, substance use and mental wellness. Over the past two years, actually, we have collected over 500 community voices, including many from San Marcos residents who strongly believe in protecting the health of our youth and young adults from the harms of tobacco use. Some examples of these voices include a community member who has worked with elementary school students who shared, "As the years have gone on, the curiosity and interest in smoking, vaping and tobacco use has reached children at younger ages." Another such community member said that protecting kids and young adults not only saves lives, but she wouldn't want anybody to experience a loved one getting sick or passing away due to smoking-related illnesses. Many voices have stressed the urgent need to keep our children safe and healthy, noting that smoking and vaping are linked to increased stress and anxiety and that staying smoke-free can contribute to better mental health and well-being and that prevention can lead to a lifetime of health benefits. Again, tonight I have a collection with me of all these community voices and I respectfully ask that you take time to read their comments and thoughtfully consider their words. Thank you for your time and consideration, of course, in protecting the health and well-being of the San Marcos community.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay. Get that to our city clerk. Okay, moving on to... Oh, do we have any further? No, okay. Just wanted to double-check. I thought those were the only three. Okay, reports. First up is Sandag. It wasn't a super busy meeting. We extended some time extensions for TDA projects in a couple of cities. We had a financial markets update. We approved a university bikeway project and State Route 7... Or I'm sorry, I always want to say 78. State Route 11, Otai Mesa Project, Non-Intrusive Inspection Technology. And then also the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Compliance Matters, which is a normal annual, every day or every year thing. Nothing too major. We are having another meeting this week. Even though we just had a meeting last week, we've been having some... A lot of different meetings so that they don't go too late. So, anyway, there will be another meeting on Friday. And I think Deputy Mayor, you were actually attending that? Yes, okay. All right. Next up is going to be League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet in two weeks, Mayor.
Okay. North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor Sonella.
Yeah, let me pull my notes up here.
Okay.
So, we met last month. And essentially, the primary focus of the meeting that we had was the operating budget. It's budget season for a lot of us for '26. And we took a kind of a forecasted look, not only at '26, but also through '23. And there was a lot of board conversation about, you know, what we might anticipate with some changes with finances from federal government with some of the policy changes that are taking place in Washington right now. Hard to say for sure how that's going to impact NCT directly. But right now, with this budget update, and this is not the final budget, so this is probably going to change. But NCTD is forecasting about a $9 million budget shortfall for the coming year. So, again, that could change, but that's where we're at right now. And there was a lot of discussion about closing that budget gap through using reserves versus cutting services. And so, again, I think that conversation is going to continue as well. But that was the gist of the meeting.
I have a quick question on the shortfall. Is that on an unanticipated expense at the last minute? Or is that for ongoing expenses, the regular ongoing expenses?
I think it's more ongoing expenses.
Okay. So, it's not that there was an emergency?
It's operating expenses.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right. North Comm, North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority.
We meet tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow? Okay. So, we'll have an update the next meeting. Clean Energy Alliance report, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is coming up this Thursday at 2:00. I do have a couple of items, though. First, I think congratulations are in order. John Mosher has been appointed to serve as one of two residents on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Congratulations. Will represent as well, I know. And then second, we have Rob Howard here today from the Clean Energy Alliance, key accounts and program manager, to introduce himself to the council and to our residents. Mr. Howard, please come up.
And when you give your 20-minute report, just kidding.
Don't joke, Mayor.
He'd be ready.
He'll take 20 minutes and more.
No, please, no 20 minutes.
First of all, Mayor, Council, thank you so much for having me here today. Just want to make sure that you all know that we are really, really being aggressive with the programs that we're trying to bring out. One that I would like to just share with you, income-qualified residents, single-family homeowners can qualify for a battery at no cost if they have solar. And there's another program that will help those who are single-family homeowners, income-qualified, they have... We have low cost for solar and battery as well. And we have a number of other things. And I will, again, forward to our board member representative, and we're introducing some other items at our next board meeting. But if you all have any questions whatsoever, we're here to help. Call us. Again, we are on the ground waiting to support our cities as best we can. Thank you.
And where would our residents find the information on those income-qualifying programs?
You can go to cleanenergyalliance.org or just Google Clean Energy Alliance and look under our Programs page. And it's going to be getting a makeover to make it easier to find those because we're now coming up on a number of programs. So, the list is getting long, so it's time to reformat it. But go to cleanenergyalliance.org or you can give us a call, but I don't have that number handed.
No worries, no worries. So, when you say single-family residents, does that... Do mobile homes qualify?
No. And the reason is, there's a separate program that I'm getting ahead of our announcements. But we have an equitable building decarbonization grant that we got from the state that does have a provision. The difference with manufactured homes is because of the way it's constructed. So, the programs we have now don't fully qualify, but we do have a program coming where we'll be doing weatherization and other work for those, for manufactured homes.
So, Councilmember Nunez, when that is launched, we definitely want to hear more about that. I know oftentimes, they could be, mobile homes specifically, could be on a one-meter. So, I think that probably has some...
There are a number of issues that make it more difficult. But again, because we're... You are pretty lucky to have Mr. Mosher on our...
We know.
...Community Advisory Committee. Another member of that same committee from Oceanside is the Chair for Oceanside's Manufactured Homes Fair Practices Commission. So, there's a lot of expertise. So, we're trying to peel through to ensure that the... What we can bring to them, we want to do that.
Yeah, because we definitely want to find programs that actually fit our communities and we can actually have a...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wonderful.
And so, we're available. Questions? We miss Councilmember Musgrove from being on, but...
Good seeing you, Rob.
But we're happy to have Councilmember Nunez there, so...
All right. Any questions from the council?
Not for me, thanks.
All right. Thank you so much for the update. Really appreciate it.
Mayor, no questions, but I did have a report from last meeting, if you remember.
Oh, yes.
I was an alternate at the last meeting. So, I too wanted to echo Councilwoman Nunez's congratulations for John Mosher. He was appointed to the Community Advisory Committee as well as Tracy Barham, who's going to represent Escondido. That was one of the things we talked about. We also... The board provided feedback and adopted a strategic plan, which you can find the entire thing online, which is too long to read here. But it goes over, you know, the plans for the organization and kind of the vision of the next steps as the organization continues to grow. And then we also amended the CEO's contract and we're going to go ahead and keep Craig Wade around for a little bit longer. He seems deserving. And it was interesting because the one time I sat in as an alternate for Councilman Musgrove was the meeting that we appointed him originally. So, I've been there now twice for two meetings as an alternate. And one where we appointed Craig and then when we extended his contract. So, that was kind of neat. I think he got... And I don't have my notes here, but I think he got about a 5% increase, which brings his annual salary up to $341,000. That was the gist of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you again for the update.
Thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to City Council Business Visits. Councilmember Nunez and Councilmember Musgrove, Redline Athletics. There you are.
Okay. Redline Athletics has been serving youth athletes for two years, building a strong foundation for performance, personal growth and character development. Serving ages 18 to 18, the center offers a high-quality performance environment focused on injury prevention and age-appropriate strength training. The program helps kids stay active, reduce screen time, which is extremely important, and develop in a safe, supportive setting, blending physical development and life skills. Owner Anan Parek and his wife, Baraj. And Anan is the son of a Montessori teacher. They bring a passion for youth education, merging athletic training with lifelong learning.
This wasn't...
Got a basketball.
This wasn't pretty.
They gave me a doctored ball. I just want everybody to know that.
What?
I'll continue on and just...
Please do.
Please advance.
Do we have video?
We better not.
I hope not.
Redline offers a wide range of sports-focused...
Did he hit you with the ball or something? Did he think it was dodgeball? I'm sorry, I have to ask now that you made such a big deal out of it.
It's not like horseshoes. You don't get a point just because you got close to the net. You get nothing. Sports-focused and skill-building programs, including injury prevention, baseball cages, pickleball, volleyball training, team training rentals, youth-specific resistance and weight training. Led by six consistent coaches, Redline provides structured, inclusive instruction across a variety of sports. Athletes earn recognition bands for milestones, fostering a culture of achievement and motivation. And classes are offered Monday through Friday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. and on Saturdays, 9:00 to 1:00. Hit it.
Yes. Redline emphasizes community connection and family involvement through flexible weekly memberships that keep kids active and engaged. And I think that's the key, right? I thought we were going to be there to see some of our future athletes and I think we might be, but they said the focus is on making sure that they are healthy individuals, not just with the athletics. And so, it's very interesting to see that aspect of what they provide.
Does that have to do with diet as well? Or when you say...
I think they want to make sure that the confidence of each individual is really what they focus on. And they do that with, obviously, the regiment, the physical aspect of it, but it also the mental and making sure that they're being encouraged.
Oh, great.
Shooting the basketball did nothing to build up my confidence level.
I noticed, right, that... Are you saying you didn't make it?
I didn't say that.
How many times did it take you?
I didn't answer that one either. So...
I'm kind of competitive like that, you know?
Moving on, if you're interested at all, they are located at 2937 Norman Strossus, which that's where Michigan turns into South Santa Fe just before you head out of town. And their number is 760-703-7473. Great place, lot of room, lot of room to expand. They're only really effectively using the ground floor. And for those who have been on the council and come to the meetings on a regular basis, this is the same building that was used by IDF training.
Oh, yes, yes, I did.
Right, so the upper floors where they had the simunition training where you could go room... So, now they have an upper floor of the entire building they're not using. But they like where they are because the ground floor gives them a lot of space. So, they have room for speed training, basketball, weight training, the pitching cage. It's pretty impressive. They're making good use of the space they have.
Let's get back to the basketball. No, I'm kidding.
Okay, game over.
Anything else?
No, another very interesting visit for us.
Great, okay. Council Commentary.
I'm going to work on my basketball game, Mayor.
Well, they had... There's Hoop House that has high-skill training. You could just go over there, they could probably help you. Okay, anything else? All right. Hope everyone had a safe Memorial Day and we will see you next meeting in two weeks. Have a great night.